Hello YouTube YouTube. What's going on? How's it going? Look at all these pages I just got there. A buck load of pages. Have so many. Where is my pre-cut? There it is. Trying to make sure I got it. Just like showing off. All the pages I've been doing. It's pretty cool. Move those out of the way. I'm a little caffeinated. I'm gonna second cup of coffee today. Feels good man feels good. Um. Oh I actually wanna be using. Oh my okay yeah. Um. Do I need some mechanical pencils today? Yeah you know what I think I will especially since I'm talking I really don't need to have too much of a scratch these don't scratch as much as regular pencils. But they uh scratch pretty good though. They at least are drawing good this is a orange. Zero point five with. Dang what kind of lead do I have in here right now? Uh I don't know I think B. I think I'm not too sure I don't know it's good blood. Alright let's draw. Uh I'm pretty warmed up this is actually my third video of the day. I'm just trying to get ahead there's. Um alright I'm gonna be taking a trip here soon but I still wanna make sure I have videos available for people to watch. And so I'm just trying to record in advance. You know trying to be a good content creator. Um do y'all celebrate Thanksgiving or uh Christmas or Hanukkah or any holidays in general that's that might be coming up? If we do what are the ones that you celebrate? I celebrate Christmas with my family as well as Thanksgiving. Um they're very fun holidays actually I don't know if I need to be cooking something for Thanksgiving myself. Need to ask my mother and see if she wants anything out of me. I don't know how I feel about that but it's fine. That's the first sketch. We gotta get one little chance right. Um pages here. But you don't like how that looks at all okay that's fine we'll make it here. Where's the other arm is right here I was like wait where's the other arm at? It's kinda behind the hair right there in the head you can't really see the foot it gets cut off in the image. She's laying down like on her bed like that but her legs hanging off on the edge. Alright the same model different pose well same pose different angle. Mm here. How's the day going I hope it's going well. My day has been pretty long so far. It's been long but it's been a solid day. And it's only just been long cuz I'm trying to record as many videos as possible. This is terrible perception right here. Um not perception but they're terrible. Uh what do you call it? Perspective not perception perspective. Whoa this is bad. It's not fine I was gonna say it's fine it's not fine this is a I really botched this pose pretty bad trying to start with the legs. Cuz this pose but you're looking from back here now and um I definitely butchered it really bad. Not a fan of how this is turning out at all. Mm. See same kinda setup. Just these legs are destroyed it is what it is. Okay so. It's alright I just do better on these other ones right? All I need to do ain't no biggie. Yeah this already feels smooth but this is also really easy pose for me. I draw this kinda pose all the time. Um you really don't see the hand in this image but I'm gonna assume it's coming down here. Hmm then it goes that. This is more of a close-up of this exact pose right here except the hands are placed differently. I don't wanna work on detailing my hands. Oh wait there we go that makes more sense. Right yeah right mm kinda. I hate close-ups cuz then I lose my um sense of what do you call it one two three four. I lose my sense of proportions. Yes what you would call it. Just cuz everything's like zoomed in and I don't know how the rest of the body come pairs to the current proportions right now. See I don't know it looks a little off. Um okay so then this hand is pretty darn close as well. I won't try to figure out the fingers too much on this one. Just cuz they're coming in a little bit thumb. Right there like so. Yeah okay yeah 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 this isn't too bad at all. And this is really all I see but okay. So that would be like that and then this goes. Yeah what did you say it's like this okay. This is like I said my third video of the day. After this I would have to do a few more sketches for myself to stay on schedule. And then I can play some video games I'm so excited. So so excited to play some video games. But then I get caught up drawing and then I stay drawing and I just enjoy the process that um that I keep when I'm drawing and so then I never really wanna get off either. Um so this is how they look. Um you probably questioning me well like what the heck did I just draw? Um that's how I appear in this reference so don't judge me. This is real life you know which is how they appear sometimes. Um. Yeah I get caught up just drawing and then like oh man I didn't play any video games at all today. And I want to I just don't sometimes. I I mentioned in my previous video that I got Pokemon. Still haven't played it since I brought that up in the previous video but I will play some more today. It's just you know trying to stay caught up or stay ahead rather. Oh dang it I already shaded this and you won't really be able to see the hand right here but the hand is placed right there. Um she's leaning against like couch bed and so um I'm gonna be playing Pokemon but then also I wanna rank up an Apex. I do enjoy playing Apex I played I played Fortnite for a bit. But um I don't know I just kinda fell off my friends didn't play anymore so I didn't play anymore so I was like well let's uh play something else and uh my friends quit playing Battle Royale I was just in general and so kinda made me a little sad. And I was like well I wanna keep playing and so I made new friends that played these video games. Not saying I don't talk to my old friends anymore they're just you know I just wanna keep playing games I enjoy but with friends. I I have a fun time playing with friends more than I do playing uh alone. Not that I won't cuz obviously you can't really play Pokemon with friends well actually with this new game you can but uh I haven't cuz me one friend that actually does have the other Pokemon that has Pokemon as well we just haven't been able to match up our schedules to play. But I understand you know he's busy I'm busy we have different schedules. Uh okay this hand is on this hip right here on the outside you can't really see the rest of it cuz the hip extends that way. Hmm. Let's work this hand in it's kinda resting on her temple. There we go. There we are. She's leaning against like the bed couch I think it's a bed actually but she's that's why I drew this like little kinda corner curve cuz she's yeah leaning on that. Well this is interesting. See so. This is a challenging pose cuz in perspective and her torso and arms are closer to me while her legs and hips are farther away so I'm trying to get them in perspective correctly her hands are on top of each other right here towards the bottom. Um where's her collarbone? Always hopes to know where it's at. Okay so now. Let's see if I can draw. Let's see if I can draw. I think I'm drawing right now even if it's not good you know. And you really don't see her lower foot just cuz it's the way it's bent. So like that. Cool once again she's on like leaning on that bed frame. Cool. Mm I wanna start from this pose. Do you enjoy playing any Battle Roy- Royales? Or any kind of shooters in general I used to be a big COD player. No I wasn't good but I really enjoyed the game. It was a very satisfying for me just to run around not even shoot people I was just that troll that wouldn't go around and knife people. Uh cuz I played a lot of uh gun game. And uh if you don't play if you don't know COD and the mechanics behind gun game well you just go around and you win the game by killing or eliminating other players with guns that you're given and every time you eliminate another player you're giving a new weapon and well. Once you get to the final weapon and you eliminate the player you win. And you oh you always have a knife. And if you knife somebody during the during the match you send them back. And then they have to start over not completely over but depending on the rules they might have to start completely over. But most of the time is just they get sent back one weapon. And then you know they get mad cuz they're like mad I tried too hard and I just got to this gun I just barely got off of it and now you put me back on the weapon and they start raging like yeah and some of them will quit. My friend quits a lot actually that's always fun to make him rage. Uh but I am kinda trolly that way. Kinda kinda miss it. But they don't play COD anymore but neither do I so it's okay. She had the thick forearm but it's alright. We like muscular women around here. Oh no it's gonna run into this right here dang it's unfortunate. I don't really calculate the size that I need to be drawing this up. That's not fun. Whatever. And then this leg really comes at us. But it's fine I won't really go into too much detail right there with that. Um okay so. So. The face obviously. Not the face but you know the head. Just cuz. I was gonna say something and I went blank cuz I started shading. There we go oh man all of these poses right now are kind of just laying down kinda relaxing against the couch. Think yeah it is a couch I only figured out it's a couch. And they're fun and challenging cuz I don't do these kind of poses at all and um the perspective is actually kinda screwing with me as well. Like right now like this perspective her head's like really huge. I don't like how it looks but it's just the way it is and the arm gets like really small just cuz fades away from that I guess the camera you could say and I don't know just not a fan. Okay see like the handle just looks huge but the head's like that kinda big in the picture itself. So leg bends back. Don't see the feet right here anymore they're not really the focus of the image. So I don't know where they go like this leg. It doesn't really it gets cut off right there so I wanna leave it as that. There we go hey I like this one she looks comfy. It's this pose but in a different one in a different angle again one from like behind. Not completely but um there we go I think that was a good line. Okay so that matches up with that so when I'm looking at these like the pose right now this is like her rear this is her shoulder. Then I realized the knee where it's bent cuz the foot's gonna come back this way. Uh the knee matches up with the shoulder slightly this kinda goes up a little bit in the front. And so that's what I'm looking for just like little landmarks right here you don't see the complete butt over here cuz then you get the heel of the foot right here and then we keep going stands. And you get the toes which actually not too sure how to wind these out right now just cuz the foot looks so straight in this pers- um point of view the kinko. And then the fold of the calf into the thigh. Taking this one a bit slower and just so I can explain a little bit the shin bone right there but the calf comes down a little bit. And right here is where her other leg extends out or his shows. And then so her other foot isn't shown in the image itself it's past right here but let's just pretend we can see it. Yeah well kinda messed it up cuz just kinda sketched it up pretty bad. Um there we go like that. And so then her body folds a little right there. So now the shoulder and the arm the forearm no the upper arm uh comes pretty much to the bottom of the leg or the top of the knee. And then the hand is bent through and it's like that her head is resting on her hand and then we're gonna draw some hair in. Like so boom. Come up that real quick cool and then chest. It's right there. Can't really see it though so I'm gonna pay attention to it. And uh yep it's very interesting cuz you don't see like her other leg her other upper leg the way the leg is bent and everything just the pose itself. Mm get a drink real quickly. Here we go this might be the last one especially with the way the shape is flowing man okay so it's gets me gets me just cuz I'm trying to figure out what line to start with. Okay so that's that let's go here. Like this. The foot goes down so I'm drawing the foot this is the leg. There we go. Now you don't even see the full foot at least not this one not cuz it gets cut off from the image but because this other foot in front of it no. Let's see trying to make this correct. Um would it be right here yeah. I'm gonna say the knee is bent right there. And like this. Easy oh sorry yes I didn't get seeing that oh no. You should okay you can see just right now. Alright and then I need connect this right here because the hand is resting right there but it's for short end. Because of the way it's laying on the um leg thigh okay so um let's get this leg bend. Cool there we are. There we go there we go. There we are. Yeah there we go it's better it just looks weird I don't like it. Okay so I know the hips someone's connected right here comes out for the rib cage. The chest. Like so. And she's resting her arm horizontally onto the couch oh man that looks so bad. Okay. Let's see how do these fingers spread? There we go. There we go the index finger is up here cuz it wants to be cool. Um. Yeah there we go. No that I'm happy with. I actually don't know what the heck is going on there there we go. Better kinda confuse me for a bit. There we go cool. Fuck this I actually enjoy most of these poses some of them yeah they're not they're off it kinda bothers me but it is what it is. I enjoyed this one cuz it was really simple really easy to draw. This one I like cuz I enjoyed how the hats turned out obviously that's there but you know what I have a handy dandy eraser that I could actually be using. Look at that it's so cool right it's like a pencil. But it erases boom. Just like that it's like I never was there well you see it's a whatever. Um yeah I like this one like that. Uh this one's nice. This one her proportions are off she looks really wide down here but it's not a big deal honestly. I did enjoy this one this one's cool this one's nice just cuz I enjoyed the fingers the walking's uh the fingers are really messed up right here uh this came out ugly that came out pretty bad too. Um and this one was uh kinda janky the foot's really janky there. Yeah but it's alright this was a fun drawing session. I hope you enjoyed I did enjoy it. Let me know what you think if you wanna see more videos where I am talking just let me know. I do not mind making these at all um I do make daily ASMR videos. The commentary uh will be I haven't decided thinking two to three times a week we'll see how they turn out. I'm gonna um as I said before and written before in my videos I am making these poses into usable reference sheets and they're gonna be cleaned up uh digitally and um I'm gonna be putting them I assume like on Gumroad I won't put them on at sea I might put them on at sea I'm not sure I don't know exactly where. If y'all recommend or if y'all have another yes what do they e-store? That y'all could recommend for artists uh let me know. Um but yes. Hope you have a good day weekend week wherever whenever you're watching this video. Um happy holidays as well if you do celebrate. And uh I'll be seeing you in the next video don't forget to like and subscribe and comment. And follow Twitter Instagram the Pixiv we have Pixiv the TikTok the uh I have other ones but those you know the Patreon you know Patreon's cool too. Uh, I have other ones, but those, you know, the Patreon, you know, Patreon's cool too. Really, really nice, uh, but yeah, uh. Have a good one.